Okay, good morning, everybody. Ready to go? All right. I hope everybody had a great weekend and Merry Christmas to everyone. The December 13th, 2022, meeting of the Charlotte zoning Board of Adjustment is now in session. I am Douglas Wilson, Chairman. Here with me today is Amy Sun, Krista Long, Tariq Hamid, and Hamilton Court. Also present are Shad Spencer, as zoning administrator. Just want to say this is Shad's last meeting. He is retiring today, so congratulations, Shad. Make sure when you go fishing, you get some good salmon and a snapper, and hope you can get those fish. Also with Shad is Lisa McCarter, Planning Project Manager, Tariq Hagler Gray, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Jill Sanchez Myers, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Terry Edwards, Clerk to the Board, and Candy Thomas, our Court Reporter. I would like to start by acknowledging that we are conducting this meeting in person. This is the 11th in-person meeting of this year of the Charlotte Zoning Board of Adjustment, and I would like to ask you for your patience today. As always, as we proceed, there may be slight delays as we transition between speakers. The zoning Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body that is governed by the North Carolina General Statute and the Charlotte zoning ordinance. We conduct evidentiary hearings on requests for variances and appeals, among other requests. Before we begin to hear the cases on today's agenda, I would like to provide some important information on the steps that were taken to ensure that each party's due process rights are protected as we proceed. Notice of this meeting was provided to the applicants and the public in several ways. Notice of today's hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of each subject property and notified to property owners of the in-person meeting. Notification letters also stated to contact the city immediately if there were any objections to the cases being heard on today's agenda. Notice was also provided by placing signs on each property and by publishing notice on the city's website. The notice for today's meeting contained information about means by which the public can access today's proceedings. Finally, any individual wishing to participate in today's evidentiary hearings were required to sign up prior to today's proceedings. The information was also included on the Board's website. The order of the recommended agenda would be as follows. The zoning administrator or a zoning staff member will identify the case and recommend approval of the variance with any recommended conditions based on specific reasons. The chairperson will ask if anyone wants to speak in opposition. If there is such a person, then the case will be moved to the regular agenda and will be heard at a later date. The chairperson will ask if the Board has questions for staff or if there are any reason the Board wishes to move the case to the regular agenda. The chairperson will then call for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. The order of the regular agenda would be as follows. All parties who plan to give testimony, pro or con, must be sworn in. A zoning staff member will explain why a permit was denied or why a variance is requested. The Board may question the staff member, and the applicant may also question the staff member. The applicant presents their testimony for this case. The Board then may question the applicant, and the staff member may also have questions for the applicant. The applicant may present sworn witness. They will be subject to questioning. Other parties wishing to speak pro or con will be given reasonable time to present sworn testimony. Staff and then the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Finally, the chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance, and then the chairperson will hold a roll call vote. After hearing each case, the Board will review the case and render a decision. This is usually done in closed deliberations after hearing each regular agenda case. However, the Board may elect to take up to 30 days to render a decision. During this time, you may remain present during deliberations, or you may call the zoning staff after the session to receive the decision of the Board. All exhibits must remain with the Board. Exhibits were recommended to be provided to the clerk no later than 12:00 PM on Monday, December 12. If your case is not appealed to the Superior Court after 30 days, you may pick them up, or they will be destroyed. If you feel there is a conflict of interest of any member of the Board or an association that would prejudice your case, please let it be known at the start of your case. The Board is acting in a quasi-judicial capacity for purposes of this hearing and can only accept sworn testimony. While the Board will not specifically exclude hearsay evidence, it is only given limited weight. The North Carolina State Bar has issued an advisory opinion that is the unauthorized practice of law for any individual who is not an active member of the bar to appear for another or otherwise assist or represent another at a quasi-judicial hearing on zoning and land use matters. All applicants should have been provided with a copy of that advisory opinion as part of the application packet. If you are a property owner or a non-lawyer here on behalf of a property owner and have not received a copy of that opinion, please notify the clerk the documents will be provided to you. If, as a result of this advisory opinion, the applicant would like to request a continuance of his or her case, the Board will consider such a request at the start of that case. Appeal from this Board is to the Mecklenburg County Superior Court. You have 30 days from the date of the Board's written decision in which to appeal in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160D-405D. In order to receive a written request, a written copy of decision, any aggrieved party must file a written request for a copy of the Board's decision by filling out the form which must be filed with the Board's clerk or chairperson at the time of the hearing of your case. You will hear four cases today, three recommended items, and one appeal. Due to one of our Board members having to leave a little early today, we're going to change the agenda up slightly. So the first case we will hear is the appeals, which is case number 2022-051. Since I have recused myself from this case, I will step away from the dais temporarily, but my colleague Krista Long will run the meeting for this part.
Motion to continue it?
Motion to continue.
Second?
Second to continue.
So the Board has determined that we will continue this case to a later date. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. A vote. Amy?
Amy, yes.
Tariq?
Hamid, yes.
Hamilton?
Hamilton, yes.
And I am a yes. So we will continue the case.
Hey. All right, so our next case will be case number 2022-078. So you should have in front of you the case following that variance. You swear, Shad, in for the last time. Shad and Lisa, do you swear or farm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
I do.
All right. Great. Okay, Lisa, you can proceed.
Okay, this first case is a residential rear yard variance request. It's got two components, a variance from the regular 35-foot rear yard and also a variance from the 25% encroachment allowance for two items in the back. So I'll give you a minute to look over your findings if you just tell me when you're done. Exhibit one is vicinity map of the property. Exhibit two is a zoning map. The property is zoned R5, single-family, and is in the Lower Lake Wiley watershed critical area. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit five is background. The home on the property was originally constructed in 1936 and is currently being renovated. The lot was subdivided in 1976 and predates the Lower Lake Wiley watershed regulations, which were adopted in 2001. The ordinance exempts lots that predate the watershed regulations from built-upon area requirements, but they're still subject to the watershed buffer requirements. The front setback for the property is 30 foot for the reported plat, and it's 10 feet greater than the standard 20-foot setback for the R5 zoning district. Exhibit six is more background. The 1936 home on the property is non-conforming because it predates ordinance requirements and encroaches into the 50-foot watershed buffer and the 35-foot rear yard. I don't think, yeah, the pointer's still not working, but you can see the blue is the 50-foot watershed buffer and the red is the 35-foot rear yard. The yellow is the encroachment area. In February 2022, the applicant obtained a permit to renovate the home, including redevelopment and expansions of portions of the structure encroaching into the watershed buffer and the rear yard. The ordinance allows non-conforming structures to be expanded if the area of the expansion is compliant with the ordinance and not within the buffer or required rear yard. The Lower Lake Wiley watershed overlay regulations are local, and they're not mandated by the state, so there's special provisions for buffer encroachments that permit mitigation in lieu of a variance for buffer disturbance. The applicant has worked with Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Services and has an approved mitigation plan. So this is a portion of the approved buffer mitigation plan. A variance is still needed for expansions and redevelopment within the rear yard. Exhibit number seven is the variance requests. The applicant wishes to cover a portion of the deck, rebuild a landing for the stairs, and raise a portion of the roof that encroaches into the rear yard. The ordinance permits certain unheated extensions on the rear of a home, such as covered decks and stair landings, to encroach 25% or 8.75 feet in this case. The red line on the graphic is the 35-foot rear yard, and the orange is the 25% encroachment allowance, which is that additional 8.75 feet. The applicant is requesting three variances. One is a 10-foot variance request from the 35-foot buffer or 35-foot rear yard, and that's to raise the roof height on a portion of the heated structure. Two is a 7-foot variance from the 25% encroachment allowance to permit a portion of the heated deck or the existing deck to be covered, right there. And three is a 5-foot variance from the 25% encroachment allowance to permit the rebuilding of a stair landing. And the stairs right now come forward, so they're actually encroaching further into the buffer. The stair landing is staying in the same place, but it's being redeveloped, so that is considered redevelopment, loses its non-conforming status, and needs the variance request. And the stairs are moving further back out of the rear yard area. Staff supports the requested variance. The hardship was not caused by the applicants. About 30% of the non-conforming home is located within the required rear yard. The applicants purchased the property in 2000. The hardship is caused by conditions peculiar to the property. The setback on the recorded plat is 30 feet, which is an additional 10 feet in depth from the 20-foot setback for R5. The established setback between the right-of-way and the home is approximately 85 feet, and that's 65 feet greater than the required setback, creating a smaller rear yard area. And that is possibly due to the old location of the well in the septic area on the lot. Exhibit number nine is considerations. Unnecessary hardships would result from the strict application of the ordinance, which wouldn't permit proposed updates to the home. The applicant states the increased roof height is needed because of the substandard roof structure that doesn't provide an adequate pitch or area for drainage, ventilation, or insulation, and it would be inconsistent with other parts of the home. The applicant states only 74 square feet of the roof encroaches into the subject rear yard. The applicant states the landing for the stairs of the deck must be rebuilt due to their poor condition and to reorient the direction of the stairs. The new proposed landing will be in the same location as the existing landing. The applicant states the proposed covered porch over the existing deck would not functionally tie into the existing home if it were reconfigured to comply with the 25% encroachment allowance due to the existing deck location. The requested variance is consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance and upholds public safety. It's in keeping with neighborhood character, and it doesn't exceed the established rear yard encroachments. Granting the variance will uphold public safety because renovation will include rehabilitation of the existing structure and the replacement of portions of the existing structure that were in poor condition due to insect damage and wood rot. The applicant states that the renovation will help bring the structure up to current building code requirements. Exhibit 10 is photos of the property. So the slope of the property, you can't really see the house from the front of the lot because of some construction things going on. Here is the deck and the stairs and landing. And you can see they're doing some work within the compliant building area also. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions.
Do we have anybody in opposition today, Terry? Okay. And is the applicant here? Okay. Do you have anything to add? Or, okay, all right, great. All right. Thank you very much, Lisa. So when we vote on this, are we just, Lisa and Terry, we're just voting as, 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 are we voting on just one whole variance? Do we have to do like three different motions? Because it's like three different variances.
If you're accepting the staff's recommendation, you could just vote on them as a group.
As a group, okay, all right. Okay, so is there a motion on the floor to approve or deny the requesting three variances?
Court moved to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Long, second.
All right, motion has been approved by Mr. Court, second by Ms. Long. Now we move into a roll call vote. Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Ms. Long?
Long, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Wilson, yes. Okay, so all three variances have been approved. So now we have to vote on the finding facts and conclusions of law. I think, given that we've approved unanimously, those, we can approve that as well. So is there a motion to approve the finding facts and conclusion of law?
Court moved to approve.
Okay, the motion's been approved, moved and approved by Mr. Court. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, been a second by Ms. Long. Now we move into a roll call vote. Ms. Long?
Long, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. Okay, the variance has been approved, and that concludes case number 2022-078. All right. Next case is case number 2022-81.
Mr. Chair, if I may interject very briefly. Ms. Sun has indicated that she knows the, I believe it's the applicant or Mr. Murray or the gentleman to your...
Okay.
Right?
With the hat on, okay, all right.
She's indicated that they just work in the same professional area, that she does not have any current business relationships, or is not anything in that regard, and that she believes she can be fair and impartial. And so, in my legal opinion, I don't believe that any conflict of interest exists, but I did want to just get that on the record and give the Board members, so as the applicant and staff, the opportunity to ask Ms. Sun any questions if they, if they like.
Is there anybody here in opposition, Chair, for this case?
Yes, Chair.
Ms. Merritt? All right. And Ms. Sun, you feel that you don't have to recuse yourself? You feel comfortable?
Yeah, I feel comfortable being impartial and fair.
Okay, all right. So we can...
All right, this next case is a residential rear yard and setback variance request. And I'll give you a moment to look over your findings. You just let me know when you're ready.
All right, Lisa, you may... Wait a minute, one second. Let me make sure Terry is... Okay. All right.
Okay, so we need to move the item off the recommendation agenda? We need to remove the item off the recommendation agenda?
Yes, that's right. So we're going to move case number 2022-81 to the regular agenda. And so we'll just... Got there.
Exhibit number one is the vicinity map of the property.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, since that one is moving off the recommendation agenda, do you want to go ahead and hear the recommendation agenda item and then go to the full hearing on this one?
Yeah, I mean, we can do that. Oh, because that's right, Mr. Court has to leave, right? Yeah, that's the other problem, too. Because the time is now. Because the up... Because the problem we have is that Mr. Court's got to leave at the next, what, three minutes? So that may hinder our, you know... Yeah, so we can...
He needs to leave in the next three minutes?
Well, I can leave at quarter to.
Quarter to?
Yeah, I'm not going that far. I'm just going down the street.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is what we're doing, all right.
All right, exhibit number two is a zoning map of the property. The property is zoned R5. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map of the property. You can see the property is located adjacent to right-of-way for Northway Drive that kind of widens for a turnaround, and the property gets narrower towards the end of that dead end. Exhibit number five is background. The site's currently vacant. The property is one parcel that was subdivided in 1944 and is identified as lots 61 and 62 on the plat map. And the property is adjacent to that turnaround for Northway Drive, so it decreases the depth of the lot at the dead end. The applicants reached out to the Charlotte Department of Transportation, or CDOT, to try to get the right-of-way abandoned to increase their lot depth, but CDOT denied the request since the right-of-way is needed for a turnaround at the dead end. And here's the letter from CDOT indicating that they would not be in support of abandoning that right-of-way. Exhibit number six is background. The property has an irregular shape with a V shape in the rear property line, right here, and the depth decreasing to about 35 feet. So when the required 20-foot setback and 35-foot rear yard are imposed on the property, the permitted building depth is about 15 feet, and there's no permitted depth over on this side of the lot. Exhibit number seven are the variance requests. The applicant wishes to construct a single-family home on the property and is requesting a 25-foot variance from the 35-foot rear yard, and that would give them a 10-foot rear yard all the way across the property. And also for this narrower portion of the property identified as lot 62, they're requesting a front setback variance of 10 feet to permit a 10-foot setback. So that would give them 15 feet over on this side and about 40 foot of depth over on this side. Exhibit eight is considerations. Staff supports the requested variance. The hardship was not caused by the applicant because the property was subdivided in 1944 and the applicant purchased the property in 2021. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property because it has a V shape in the rear yard and decreases in depth at the end of Northway. The applicants have exhausted the option of obtaining more depth through the right-of-way abandonment, and without the variance, there is not sufficient lot depth to build a home. Exhibit nine is considerations. The variance is consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance and upholds public safety. The variance would permit a building depth of 15 to 40 feet, which is consistent with other homes in the area that range from 25 to 55 feet. So I have the building depths over here of the neighboring homes. The applicant also states that they can ensure the driveway will be at least 20 feet to comply with zoning ordinance requirements by placing the driveway on the portion of the lot with greater depth. So this is the applicant's exhibit showing roughly where the driveway could go. The 20-foot driveway will uphold public safety, ensuring maneuvering area and visibility for pedestrians. Exhibit number 10 is photos. And just so you can kind of situate, here's the neighbor's driveway in the dead end right here. So looking kind of sideways at the front of the lot, there's the neighbor's driveway and the dead end. So it's heavily wooded. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions for me.
In this picture right here, maybe the third block? Is that somebody's house?
Right here?
Across from, like, directly across, yes.
Yes. Yeah, and let me pull up the, the other aerial. Right there.
Lisa, can you go back to that slide you finished on and just point out, with the pointer, where the driveway would go? No, 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 the next one, I think. It was an aerial, yeah.
Oh, sorry. This is very sensitive.
Right there. Can you show us where the, is the driveway where that 35 is?
So the driveway, what happens in these situations when there's unbuilt right-of-way is the applicant would work with the Charlotte Department of Transportation to have a driveway. If they, if they go back with the driveway, they could put the driveway here. You know, that's a pretty great depth right there for the lot.
Is that where it shows the driveway on the slide previous?
No, they're showing the driveway over in this area. So, yeah, they would have to work with CDOT to make sure it's appropriate. It looks like it's officially a dead-end street, yeah.
That's what I had to get permission from, to pop chat rotation. Okay.
For a turnaround, yeah.
So Chair, this case is going back on the recommended agenda. The opposition was for a case that's continued until January.
All right.
To clarify, we have no opposition for this case. It's going back on the recommended agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, last time. So in that case, I know the applicant is here. I mean, since there's no more opposition, do you still want to present your case? I don't know, like, I see Mr. Murray is sitting next to you. I would say no, I don't know. Okay, all right, okay. So any other questions for Lisa from the board?
Um, so in order to build out a house there, do CDOT need to build that driveway or they don't need to?
So the applicant will have to build the driveway. Whoever constructs the home will build the driveway. But they'll have to work with CDOT to make sure that driveway is approved. Since it's in the right-of-way, it has to be specific materials and up to specific standards. It wouldn't have to be a complete street, but they do have some requirements for those situations.
Got it. So CDOT will not build that dead end? They will not, okay.
So I'll just make sure there's no more questions for me? That's it, you guys? Okay, all right, well, um, thank you very much, Lisa. Is there a motion on the floor to approve, uh, the variances or deny the variances?
Court moved to approve the variance.
Okay, uh, motion has been, uh, approved by Mr. Court. Now, is there a second?
Long second.
Okay, second by Ms. Long. Now we move into a roll call vote, Ms. Long?
Long, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. Okay, the variance has been approved. Finding facts and conclusions of law? Is there a motion to approve the finding facts and conclusions of law?
Court moved to approve.
Motion been moved, um, motion been approved by, uh, Mr. Court. Is there a second?
Long second.
Second by Ms. Long. Now moving to a roll call vote, uh, Ms. Long?
Long, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Uh, Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. So case number two zero dash two two zero eight one has been approved. All right, thanks a lot. All right, um, so last... Before I say that, all right, last case on the agenda today is case number two zero two two dash eight two. Chair.
And is the applicant okay proceeding? Okay.
Yes, we are.
All right, our next case is a residential rear yard variance request for a non-conforming vacant lot. I'll give you a moment to look over your findings.
Okay. So this is where the same applicant from the last case?
Um, same, um, attorney.
Same attorney, okay, but I, okay. Sorry about that. All right, you may proceed, Lisa.
Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. It's kind of hiding up there to the north. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The zoning is R five, single-family. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. And exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit number five is background. This is a vacant, non-conforming lot that was subdivided in nineteen forty-two. The lot is twenty-five feet in width and about two thousand two hundred and sixty-five square feet in area. And that's less than the required fifty-foot lot width and six thousand square foot lot area required for R five. The ordinance allows the lot to be permitted a single-family dwelling if the setback yards and parking requirements can be met. The front of the lot is located on Newland Road and the rear of the property is located on Madrid Street. And Madrid Street is an unopened right-of-way, but it meets the definition in our zoning ordinance for a street. So since the front and rear are but streets, the twenty-foot setback is applied to both the front and the rear of the property. Exhibit... I don't know why it's being so sensitive. Okay, exhibit six is the variance request. The applicant would like to construct a home on the property and is requesting a ten-foot variance from the twenty-foot rear setback. So that'll go from about thirty-two feet of depth to about forty-two to seventy-six feet of depth. Exhibit seven is considerations. Staff supports the requested variance. The hardship's not a result of actions taken by the applicant who purchased the property in twenty nineteen. The applicant states they exhausted the option of purchasing the adjacent property. And so this little property on the corner here, they tried to purchase. But when they reached out, um, the owner had passed away and he didn't have a will. So it went to multiple heirs, so it's kind of tied up in litigation right now and doesn't have a clear title to sell. The hardship results from conditions peculiar to the property. The lot has a decreased width and depth and the rear of the property line is angled. The compliant building footprint is fifteen feet in width and ranges from thirty-two to sixty-six feet. The applicant states that they will need forty-two feet in depth to accommodate a fifteen-foot wide home. The requested variance will permit a depth of forty-two to seventy-six feet. The lot area of two thousand two hundred and sixty-five square feet is less than other lots in the area that average about seven thousand five hundred square feet or greater. And there's an exception of this little lot, um, adjacent that's one thousand nine hundred and sixteen square feet. Exhibit eight is considerations. The requested variance is consistent with the intent of the ordinance and uphold safety. The reduced rear setback won't be easy to detect because of the unopened right-of-way to the rear of the property. The applicant states that Madrid Street is unlikely to be opened, according to CDOT, because of the stream and buffer. And you can see down here the water quality buffer that runs across the street. The variance will uphold public safety. The applicant's original variance request included a reduction of the twenty-foot setback along Newland Road. And since the property is only twenty-five feet wide and they'll need all of that space to accommodate the home and probably won't have room for a driveway and a setback, they withdrew that original request to shorten the twenty-foot front setback so that they can accommodate a twenty-foot driveway, um, for safe maneuvering and for pedestrian safety. Exhibit nine is photos. So this is looking straight at the property. There's a little house next door. And then Madrid Street is currently just a driveway. Um, it's serving this home and there's another lot further back that it's serving. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions for me.
Um, so my question is for our two city attorneys. Of course, what stood out to me in your presentation is the fact that the original owner passed away and it's, I guess, this property is in, caught up in the courts or is it...
So that's the adjacent property that they've tried to purchase, yeah.
All right, because I was concerned if we voted a yes on this, could we run the risk of being pulled into a court testimony? Um, so, okay, I was confused on that, sorry about that.
Yeah, they had just exhausted the option of purchasing the property next door to give them more space.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Lisa?
I do. Can you clarify, I guess, your last point? Are we voting on a single variance request?
Yeah.
So we're only voting on item B?
So...
Because the variance application has item A and B. Item A is a ten-foot variance from the twenty-foot.
On the, um, the rear setback adjacent to Madrid Street.
Thank you.
Ten-foot rear yard setback.
Was that section, what, twelve point one two?
Yeah, that's right. Twelve point one oh two, item four.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff? Terry, is there anybody here in opposition?
No, Chair.
Okay. With that, Mr. Murray, I'm assuming you do not want to, you know, testimony, okay? All right, uh, with that said, uh, is there a motion on the floor to approve or deny the variance?
Hamid motioned to approve the variance request.
Is there a second?
Long second.
Okay, motion was approved by Mr. Hamid, second by Ms. Long. Now we will move to a roll call vote. Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Uh, Ms. Long?
Long, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Wilson, yes. The variance has been approved. Finding facts and conclusions of law? Is there a motion to approve the finding facts and conclusions of law as written?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, uh, motion was approved by, uh, Ms. Krista, I mean, Ms. Krista, Jesus. Ms. Long, um, is there a second?
Hamid, second.
Second by Mr. Hamid. Now moving to a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Ms. Long?
Long, yes.
Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Wilson, yes. All right, Kate has been approved. All right, so next agenda item we have is before we get into approval of them, uh, before we get into officer elections, we got to approve the November, uh, meeting minutes. Any, um, I see there's a comment, any changes on here? Excuse me?
Well, uh, I wonder if you, you are missing several board members who want to wait until your next meeting to approve, uh, new officers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were doing the minutes.
Yeah, we're doing the minutes right now, yeah.
Oh.
But, but she's saying like... That is true, that is true. You're looking good on that. So...
Yes, so, um, uh, according to your rules, the, um, the new officers will take, um, uh, their seat, whatever you go, will start presiding at the January meeting. Um, uh, but the clerk and I had talked about if you wanted to go ahead and take nominations, um, today. Um, and then, um, you could vote at the January meeting as the first agenda item is to go ahead and conduct the vote, um, since there are, um, members that are absent. You only have four members here today. And then those officers, the new officers, could take, could preside, start their turn. I can't, I'm blanking on the, um, immediately at the January.
That, that makes sense because we're, we're losing Krista after the January meeting too.
Okay.
So, yeah, that make, makes sense. Okay, so let's, um, vote on the minutes, then we can then...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November.
All right, motion's been, uh, moves approved in minutes from November. Is there a second?
Hamid, second.
Uh, second by Mr. Hamid, uh, be a roll call vote, Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Ms. Krista? Ms. Long? Ms. Sun?
Sun, yes.
Wilson, yes. All right, those minutes have been approved. Now, okay, so, um, is everyone okay moving, first moving to officer elections to January if they go up? Screaming on that. As far as nominations, so the two officer slots we have is Chair and Vice Chair, that's it, right? Okay, so, um, is there any nominations for Chair?
I nominate Mr. Wilson.
Okay, anybody else want to nominate me? Okay, sorry. All right, so I've been nominated for Chair again. And so our Vice, our current Vice Chair is Ms. Deborah Trident, who is not here. Um, is there a, um, are any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would nominate Ms. Trident.
Ms. Trident.
Same here.
Okay, so you got it, all right, so... Looks like that will, I'm sure she'll be happy, excited when she comes back. Okay, so, um, our next meeting in January, it was, I guess that's what our regular schedule, Terry, at the end of January?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. All right, so, um, is there anything else we need to vote on, any more of business? All right, so...
If you could just state the disposition of case number twenty twenty-one oh eight three on the record, because it is on the agenda, but I haven't heard anything in regards to whether that's being continued, the first appeal.
Wait three.
Or are we hearing that?
No.
Or did, sorry, am I looking at the old agenda? Yep, sorry, I was looking at the draft.
Oh, no, 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 you're fine, yeah. You're fine. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. That meeting is adjourned. And I guess, uh, Shad, it's been pleasure working with you, man. At least for me personally, I think you've been here since I've been on the board. And I don't even know when I got on the board, remember was it like, what, twenty, twenty eighteen? I think, I think it would have been in West twenty-eighteen, yeah, you've been here for a minute, so we're gonna miss you. Uh, you, you, you really bring a good sense of positive energy to these meetings, so we're gonna miss you. I really hope you enjoy yourself, you know, uh, don't, you know, relax too much, watch too many Net, too much Netflix.